We're getting retired and stuff. People are excited to get out of here, I guess, maybe. So there's a hum of excitement. In a moment, but we're going to go ahead and get into some of this fun stuff and you can catch up whenever he gets here. I'd like to start by asking Pastor Cody Logan from Hill Country United Methodist Church, come and share any words of wisdom you have with us and a prayer would be ideal. And then we'll follow that with the pledges by Mr. Payson and the vision statement by Ms. Tubig. Pastor Logan.
But I have prayer if you'll bow your heads with me. Almighty God, it is such an honor, a privilege, and a humble calling to stand before you and together tonight as stewards of your most precious resources here in our community of Marble Falls. We just pray that your spirit would be here to lead us. Our hearts would be in a mind of discernment. We would be seeking your divine plan on how best to share all of the blessing and all of the divine inspiration that you have for each of our children here in this place. I offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ on behalf of our community that seeks after God and truth. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Logan. Let's see, that gets us right into some fun stuff right off the bat. Ready, Mr. Bocheers? Ms. Tubig will get into the administration of the oath of office. I think Ms. Schaefer will coordinate us through that.
Wait, that's not what it says.
All right, start over.
All right.
I, Pastor Bocheers, solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Marble Falls ISD Board of Trustees, Placed at the State of Texas, and will to the best of my ability, reserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to everyone who got out there and voted, but especially thank you to our community for, you know, passing this bond. I know we have a lot of work to do and I'm just excited to be a part of it and get to work.
Yeah, I just too want to say thank you to our community for the support for allowing me to serve on the board for a fourth term. Like Crystal said, we have a lot of really exciting things going on in the district with a lot of, a lot more exciting things to come. And I'm just feeling really blessed to be a part of that. And just a really huge thank you to my family, my wife, Michelle, my kids, Annie, Garrett, and Grayson, and my parents, Bo and Sean. Y'all were out there every day with me campaigning, knocking on doors, handing out flyers, talking to neighbors on quite a few hot days. And we took up a lot of your time and your energy and we probably missed quite a few family dinners in the process, but I'm just very grateful for y'all. Just thank you.
Proud to serve beside each one of you and I'm glad y'all are, y'all are here and serving the kids. So thank you for that and congratulations. Anybody else? Any? All right. Very good. All right, that gets us to special recognitions. 7A is 2025 retiree recognitions. Mr. Whittle.
Good evening, Board. We are proud to recognize five retirees for the 2025 school year. Tonight, we have five with us. We're going to start with Marble Falls Elementary. I'm going to ask Mr. Haley, if you would, make your way up to the desk area table and you will pass out the pens to the retirees. So first off, we have Diane Aradondo. Ms. Aradondo. Diane, if you'll make your way to the front. And Ms. Aradondo's family, if you will please stand. And I have some things to share with you, Ms. Aradondo. Diane is retiring after 30 years of service and education with 27 of those years at Marble Falls ISD. She has served as a classroom teacher and most recently as a math specialist at Marble Falls Elementary School. Mr. Haley shared the following about you, Ms. Aradondo. Diane has had a profound and lasting impact on generations of Mustangs. Her influence extends far beyond the classroom, reaching students, families, and colleagues in meaningful and lasting ways. It's a powerful thing to see former students entrusting their own children to her care and even more moving to hear the deep emotion in their voices as they speak of her upcoming departure at Marble Falls Elementary School. Over the years, I've had the privilege of watching Diane lead with quiet strength, grace, and unwavering dedication. In every role she's held, she's brought high expectations and a deep commitment to student success. Whether supporting struggling learners or challenging advanced students through the Horizons program, Diane has always sent a clear message. Every child matters. She has been a steady presence and a guiding, guiding force for staff and students alike, mentoring others, refining programs, and stepping up wherever needed. Her leadership is humble and steadfast. She never seeks recognition, but her impact is unmistakable. Diane, thank you for your tireless service, your thoughtful leadership, and the heart you've poured into this school. You've made Marble Falls Elementary School a better place and your legacy will continue to shape this community for years to come. Ms. Aradondo, on behalf of Marble Falls ISD, we thank you for your service and your unyielding commitment to love and inspire our students, staff, and community. Thank you. Next up is Marble Falls Middle School. Mr. Gonzalez will come up forward, please. Up next, we would like to recognize Ms. Brenda Belk. Ms. Belk, if you'll make your way to the front. And would Brenda's family in the audience please stand? Ms. Belk is retiring with 35 years of total service and education, all of those spent serving the students at Marble Falls ISD as a school librarian. Ms. Belk, Mr. Gonzalez shared the following about you. It is with deep appreciation and admiration that we celebrate the retirement of our beloved librarian Brenda Belk. For years, she has been a cornerstone of both our school community and the Marble Falls community, bringing knowledge, kindness, and unwavering support to students and staff alike. Her dedication to promoting literacy and fostering a love of reading has touched countless lives. With a deep understanding of education and an impressive breadth of knowledge, she has helped shape curious minds and supported every learner who walked through the library doors. Whether recommending the perfect book, creating a welcoming space for all students, or partnering with teachers to enrich instruction, Ms. Belk has led with heart, purpose, and professionalism. We are incredibly grateful for the legacy she leaves behind, one of compassion, excellence, and service to others. She will be greatly missed, but her impact will be felt for years to come. Wishing her all the best in the next exciting chapter. Thank you for everything, Ms. Belk. Ms. Belk, on behalf of Marble Falls ISD, we thank you for your service and your unyielding commitment to love and inspire our students, staff, and community. Thank you. Next, we have the maintenance department. If Mr. Jeff Rowland will come forward. Our next one to honor is Ms. Debbie Rector. Debbie, if you will make your way to the front and with Ms. Rector's family and supporters in the audience, please stand. Debbie is retiring after 31 years of service and education, all with Marble Falls ISD, where she has served as a vital part of our maintenance department and all of our campuses. Mr. Rowland shared the following about, about you, Debbie. Debbie Rector has been a valued member of Marble Falls ISD for over 31 years. She began her career as a custodian and through hard work and dedication rose to the position of district custodial supervisor. Debbie consistently led by example, demonstrating professionalism, reliability, and a strong work ethic. Her leadership helped maintain clean, safe, and efficient campuses, and she played an important role in supporting and guiding her team. Debbie's steady presence and commitment to the district have made a lasting impact. As she retires, we thank her for many years of service and wish her all the best in this next chapter. Ms. Rector, on behalf of Marble Falls ISD, we thank you for your service and your unyielding commitment to love and inspire our students, staff, and community. Congratulations. And now we have, we have Mr. Jeff Rowland. Mr. Rowland's family is here, if they would please stand as well. Jeff Rowland. Jeff is retiring from his role as Director of Maintenance of Marble Falls ISD. He is leaving us after 24 years of service and education, all dedicated to Marble Falls ISD. Jeff, you've been a backbone in our district, a steady and reliable presence whose calm leadership and quiet strength have guided the maintenance department with integrity and care. Whether navigating daily operations or unexpected challenges, you have consistently approached every situation with a level head and a generous spirit. You are respected, not only professionally, but also deeply admired for your kindness and the respect that, that you've shown everyone around you. Jeff's character, work ethic, and genuine compassion have made a lasting impact, not just on our facilities, but on the people who have had the privilege to work with you. While we will miss you, your steady hand, your warm smile, we are incredibly grateful for the years you've given to the district. Your legacy will continue in the strong foundation you have helped build and in the hearts of those who have had the privilege of working alongside of you. So, Mr. Rowland, on behalf of Marble Falls ISD, we thank you for your service and your unyielding commitment to love and inspire our students, staff, and community. God bless. And last, but certainly not least, Mr. Rick Hoover. Would Rick's family in the audience please stand? Rick has been with Marble Falls ISD for the past 12 years and is retiring with 19 total years of service and education. Rick has worn many hats during his time with us, most recently as the Director of Special Programs and Safety and Security, but also served as Athletic Director, Head Boys, Soccer Coach. In every role, Rick has brought a passion for people, a heart for service, and a commitment to excellence. His coaching career was marked by numerous accolades, but more importantly, by the lives he influenced and the confidence he instilled in the students he led. Rick has never met a stranger. His warmth and kindness are infectious, and he has an unmatched ability to make others feel seen, heard, and valued. In moments of crisis, Rick has been a calm and steady hand, showing up with poise, confidence, and that unmistakable presence that lets you know everything is going to be okay. When Rick walks into the room, it truly feels like cavalry has arrived. Rick Hoover has given so much of himself to this district and to the community of Marble Falls. He leaves behind a legacy of leadership, compassion, and unwavering commitment to others. So, Rick, on behalf of Marble Falls ISD, we thank you for your service and your unyielding commitment to love and inspire our students, staff, and community. Well done.
Congratulations, y'all. And I just, it's incredible to me just think, think about the years of wisdom and the kindness and the investment in kids that has happened with just that small group of individuals that we just recognized. And we do thank you for your service. And as Mr. Whittle has said very, very good, very well there that you will be definitely missed, but the ripples that you've made in people's lives will continue forever. And so we thank you for that. Board, anything to add to this? Thank you for your service. And we will jump into the Jim Award. Dr. Yasaway.
It is not very often that we get to recognize one of our students. In fact, I'm not sure we've recognized one of our students with the Going the Extra Mile Award, but this is Caleb Farrell. Caleb is a senior in high school. He'll be graduating in just a mere four days. And then he will be shipping off in August, August 11th, to the Army to serve our country. And, and y'all, as much as I'd love to say that's why we're recognizing him, that actually isn't why we're recognizing him. We, we thank you for your service, but more, more importantly, last week Caleb was in a classroom with one of our teachers, Ms. Herrera. And Ms. Herrera, all of a sudden started choking on her lunch. And Caleb, she made the international sign of, "I'm choking and I need help." And Caleb, without even hesitating, was able to help her perform the Heimlich maneuver. Had to, I think, perform it a couple of times to get it dislodged, but ultimately, in the opinion of our nurse, our, our teacher, and our SRO, potentially saved her life. And so it gives me great, I feel very confident with him going into our armed forces, that our hands, that we're in good care because of young men like this. And so Caleb, on behalf of Marble Falls ISD, we want to present you with just a certificate that you can hang on your refrigerator. But, but this is something that, that we give to our staff to let them know how much we love and appreciate them. Thanks for going the extra mile. Thanks for saving her. Thanks for doing, being there. Congratulations.
All right, very good. Well deserved. Congratulations and thank you for being there, jumping into action. All right, my item 7C is Marble Falls High School Esports State Qualifiers. Ms. Feller.
So, most of y'all that know me know I like to talk, but I'm not going to say what I was going to say. And instead, I'm going to use the words from our coach, Caldwell, who could not make it today because he is sick. So he, first of all, sends his regrets that he cannot be here. But, he says, "My apologies for not being able to attend today. I would like to thank each and every player that has been a part of the Marble Falls Esports Team. I would also like to thank the parents of these players, Marble Falls ISD, the high school ACE program. Woo, sorry. Coach Adam Ray, who was our former coach, for helping us get esports, esports off the ground. We started esports with only one team consisting of four guys last year, and that quickly elevated to over 35 active players within nine different teams. Those guys, over one year, brought home one state title, one national title, and three runner-up titles, one of those being national and one of those being state, and 12 playoff appearances. I could not be more proud of this team and I wish my seniors well as they move forward in life and do amazing things after graduation." I have one last special shout out. Who couldn't be here today either. This is a special kid to be too. Jeremy Williams. Jeremy has captained six teams during this time with esports, and I thank him for the many hours practices and games he put into the esports program. Thank you to everyone who has supported us. And the tears are because neither one of us will be here next year, and so we're kind of leaving on a really high note, but hoping that someone will be able to kind of pick up this team and carry on the legacy that we've been able to create in just two short years with esports and with the ACE program. So, and I have to credit, thanks to the amazing esports team and the 34 kids that we recruited for esports, we were able to make our ACE numbers at the high school, which was huge. We started with one kid last year and have over 200 enrolled at just the high school now. So, very proud. I only saw a couple of them. We have Oliver Lyons, if you'll stand up.
Have him come.
He's one of our freshmen, so hopefully he'll keep us going. And, yeah, Oliver, come on. And Lainey. Hard time. So, I think he's a junior, so hopefully we're leaving it in their hands. Thank y'all.
Congratulations, y'all, and keep, keep making us proud. We're looking forward to what you've got in store. Very good. All right, item D is Marble Falls High School Track Qualifiers, State Qualifiers. Coach Silva, Coach Gonzalez. There we go.
Well, I was going to, I was going to present Tyler, since he's the, the only boy, and then Coach Gonzalez is going to present the girls. Not sure if I want to use this or not. So, good afternoon. My name is Austin Silva, and I'm the Head Boys Track Coach here at Marble Falls High School. And I'm here to present Tyler Hamlin. And before I get started, I just can't help but remember, standing in this exact spot last year, basically telling all of you that Tyler would be back his senior year. And I didn't say that to be arrogant, you know, I didn't, I didn't say that to put more pressure on Tyler. I said that because I believed in Tyler. And, and the belief I had in Tyler came from the qualities that he displayed over the course of his entire high school track career. You know, where others made excuses, Tyler stayed committed. Where others got distracted, Tyler remained focused. And where others let up, Tyler always gave everything that he had. And in my opinion, that's what made Tyler special. And ultimately, that's why Tyler is a two-time state finalist in the 3200 meter run. As a senior, set to, set to graduate this year, I hope that Tyler can take the lessons that he's learned on the track, as well as the qualities that he's displayed into his next chapter of life. And then I just want to close with this. Tyler, we want to say that we're incredibly proud of you for not only everything that you accomplished this year, but for everything that you've accomplished over the course of your entire track and field career. We want to thank you for everything that you did for our track program. And most importantly, Tyler, we want to say that it's because of you and the standard that you set for our younger guys and our returners that our track program will continue to have success in the future. Thank y'all.
All right, if Matty and Kyrie can come over. All right, so good evening, everyone. I am the Girls' Hitch Coach at Marble Falls High School. So, I can't wing it like he did, so I wrote it down. It is, it is my honor and privilege to recognize three remarkable student athletes who represented Marble Falls High School at the US, UIL State Track and Field Meet this year. These young people exemplify what it means to be a Mustang, driven, dedicated, and determined, both in competition and in the classroom. Senior Matty Cuplin, non-senior sophomore, had a phenomenal season. Senior Maddie Cuplin, non-senior sophomore, whoo, had a phenomenal season. Maddie is a hard worker, humble, and focused young lady who brings energy and joy to everything she does. She dominated throughout the season in both her sprint and field events. Maddie was a district and area champion in the 100, 200, long jump, and triple jump, an incredible accomplishment. At the regional meet, she made the finals in both sprint events and was crowned regional champion in long jump and triple jump, earning her first trip to state meet. At the UIL State Meet, Maddie delivered under pressure, earning a bronze medal with a third-place finish in the long jump and placing fifth in triple jump, just shy of her personal best. What a way to cap off a sophomore season. What truly sets Maddie apart is her relentless work ethic, her competitive spirit, and her genuine love for the sport. I am honored to be part of her journey so far, and I can't wait to see what she does next. Great job, Maddie. Proud of you. Next, we have senior Kylie Roberts, a thrower whose growth and grit over four years has been nothing short of inspiring. As a freshman, Kylie advanced to area in discus. As a sophomore, she won her first district title and area titles in discus and competed at regionals. Her junior year brought both her district titles in shot put and discus, advancing to area in both events. She moved on to the regionals again in discus and narrowly missed qualifying for regionals in the shot put by just one spot. This year, Kylie swept district titles in both shot and discus, added an area title in discus, and placed fourth in shot, put an area to qualify for regionals in both events, her first time doing so in shot put. At regionals in discus this year, Kylie was out of finals with one throw left in prelims. She needed to throw over 104 feet to advance and earn three more attempts. With all the pressure on her shoulders, Kylie stepped into the ring with confidence and delivered her best throw of the competition, 114 feet, six inches, and it held for second place, securing her first-ever trip to the state meet, continuing the proud Roberts family legacy of lead throwers. It was a moment that captured her resilience, determination, and ability to rise when it mattered most. At stage, she competed with the very best in Texas, a dream come true and well-earned reward for years of hard work. Kylie leaves Marble Falls as one of the most decorated throwers in school history and a record holder in shot and discus. Great job, Kylie. Proud of you. And I know Coach Silva talked about Tyler, but as one of the distance coaches, I got to experience a lot of his work ethic throughout the year. So, senior Tyler Hamlin had an incredible career he had. Tyler finishes his career at Marble Falls as a four-time cross-country state qualifier, state medalist, and two-time state qualifier in track and field. He has been a leader and a competitor, an example for his teammates, always bringing out the best in those around him. His teammates, especially the distance crew, will miss him dearly, both for the way he led and the way he loved the grind. It's been a true blessing to be part of your journey during his senior season. Great job, Tyler. Proud of you. These three athletes have not only made history, they've inspired our program and set a new standard for excellence. They are backed by a strong support system at home, with families who have been by their side every step of the way, and of course, none of this would be possible without the many coaches who have poured into their growth and success. As we celebrate these three athletes tonight, we also want to wish Kylie and Tyler all the best as they begin the next chapter of their lives. Tyler will be attending the University of Houston, and Kylie will continue her journey at Texas State University. They leave behind a legacy that will continue to inspire future Mustangs. On behalf of Marble Falls Track and Field, thank you for letting us honor Maddie, Kylie, Tyler. We are so proud of them and excited for what lies ahead.
Well, they make their way back. If you're a family, Tyler, Maddie, Kylie, y'all stand up and let us, Kylie, I'm sorry, let us recognize y'all as well, family members. Thank you all for representing us well, and good luck, those of you, those two of you that are going on to college, good luck in college, we'll be rooting for you here, so. Thank you. Marble Falls High School tennis, we'll keep the state stuff going here. Tennis state qualifiers, Coach Whitley.
Good evening. I am Sam Whitley, and it's my honor and privilege, along with Coach Redman, to introduce your state tournament qualifiers. Senior Weston York, he joined the tennis team as a junior transferring from Flower Bluff, and he made an immediate impact. This past year, he was a first-team All-District in Doubles and Academic All-District in the Fall. Weston and his partner won first place in the district tournament, which qualified them for regionals. In the regional tournament, they were not seeded nor placed among the top six teams. However, they defeated the number-two team and finished third in regionals, which qualified them for state. Weston was also a member of the soccer team, and Weston will be headed out west to attend Texas Tech in the fall. Sophomore Cooper Kelly, he participated tennis at the middle school. His freshman season, he was participating in varsity matches. In the spring of his freshman year, Cooper competed in many junior varsity tournaments, winning first place in most of those tournaments. This past fall season, he was selected first-team All-District in Doubles, was Academic All-District in the Fall as well as the Spring. Cooper was Weston's partner this past spring in Doubles. As already stated, they won first place in the district tournament, which qualified them for regionals, where they finished third in regionals, which qualified them for state. Cooper Kelly is also a member of the band and currently in the top 10% of his class. Junior Cooper Womack, he's back again. He also participated in tennis at the middle school. As a freshman, Cooper won first place in the district tournament, which qualified him for regionals. As a sophomore, Cooper was selected first-team All-District and helped us win the Bi-District Championship in the fall season. In the spring of his sophomore year, he again won district champion as well as regional champion, which qualified him to attend the state tournament. This past fall season, Cooper was selected first-team All-District as a single and doubles player. This past spring, Cooper three-peated as a district champion and placed third in regionals, which qualified him for the state tournament. As a freshman, Cooper was a member of the band and played basketball for the Mustangs. Cooper, for six semesters now, has been Academic All-District performer and currently is in fourth in his class.
Congratulations, y'all. Keep up the good work. Those of you that are sticking around, congratulations to families as well. Families, we all stand up and let us recognize you as well. Cooper and Cooper. Very good. Thank y'all. All right, Spotlight on Excellence, Dr. Gassway.
Y'all, we have a fun spotlight tonight. This is Kelly Figueroa from our middle school, and so you get to stand here and hang out while we watch the video. This is the best part.
Well, here we are. It is the month of May. We're at the very last Spotlight on Excellence for the 24-25 school year, and you have somebody you want to nominate. Tell me who you want to nominate and why.
So, I am nominating Ms. Kelly Figueroa. She is one of our cafeteria workers here at the middle school, but she's also one of our most amazing ACE teachers. I am nominating her because she just goes above and beyond all the time, and with a huge smile on her face, and with the most quality energy.
Awesome. Tell me, tell me about some of the things like that you get to see from her in ACE.
So, not only is she a teacher, but she also helps pass out our snacks, and she knows almost every single kid's face from the regular school day, but also in the ACE school day. So, she sees them, and she's like, "Hey, John Doe, how are you doing today?" And they go, "Oh, Ms. Kelly, how are you today?" And they all just love her so much, so when she gets in there, they all want to talk to her, and they all want to tell her about their day and how excited they are. And when she gets to teach her, her enrichment class, I don't know if you guys noticed, but she was actually a medic in the military, and she's now teaching a field medic class for our ACE kids, so they're learning how to do CPR, stop the bleed, they're doing all of these amazing things that she's wanting to teach our next generation of kids.
Awesome. Well, you hit something right on the head, that the power of relationships is just such a strong force, and so thank you for nominating her, thank you for her being in our Spotlight on Excellence meeting, so thank you again.
Thank you guys so much. I am so happy to have nominated her. She's the best.
Good, good. Here we are, it's May, and Kelly, you are our May Spotlight on Excellence Award winner. We want to recognize you, and I will tell you, Laura from ACE talked just about, just all the great things, not only here in the kitchen, but your work in ACE, talked about just how you know the kids' names, the relationships that you have with the kids, how you've taken some of the experience you have as an Army medic and incorporated that into your time in the classroom and teaching the kids, tell me what inspires you, what makes you build those relationships with kids, and makes you somebody that we're getting to recognize.
Um, I just, I know a lot of them, just want somebody to talk to and relate to them, and I just try to talk to them like a person and not a child.
Yeah.
Just a regular person.
Well, I will say, that has not gone unnoticed, and when, you know, when we think about educators that make such a strong impact on kids, you know, it's about the relationships, that kids aren't going to remember the lesson that they learned, they're not going to remember a particular assignment, really, but they're going to remember how somebody made them feel, and you're making the kids love you, remember you, and that's standing out, and so thanks for all you do to love and inspire our kids. All right? Congratulations.
Y'all, this, this is the most uncomfortable I can make. Kelly is standing and watching a video of herself. She is a woman of few words with us, but yet, when you put her in front of the kids, she will not let a kid go by without putting an investment in them. So, thank you for all you do. A small something for you, for home, a little memento on Spotlight on Excellence, something for you to put on your refrigerator, so your family knows how proud we are of you, and so thanks for all you do. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Do we have Ms. Figueroa's family back there as well? You want to stand up? Let us recognize you as well. Congratulations. Well deserved. Spotlight on Engagement, Ms. Leflet.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to recognize a very special teacher. He embodies our mission statement and has been a mentor and teacher to so many of us in this room. He shows all of us what student engagement is every day, no matter the age, no matter the circumstances. He's one of the most humble humans I know, and I'm ever so honored that he agreed to come this evening for us to honor him with the Spotlight on Engagement. If we could have Coach Scares from Falls come up here. When you have someone this special, it's hard to put his impact in a few words, and once some people figured out that it was him, I started receiving all these emails. I can't think of a better way to honor him than to read some of the words of his colleagues. And so, Ms. Pond, she wanted everybody to know, Coach Scares is the epitome of engagement. He works diligently with the students in his class to ensure their academic success. Beyond the classroom, he collaborates with the Epic program to provide students with the tutoring support they need. He also teaches valuable life skills such as building and gardening. Ms. Tennyson, who's known him for a while, says Coach Scares has always shown loving and inspiring even before the district created the mission. He engages the students in gardening and other school activities. Ms. Mata, Coach has a passion and dedication for supporting all students, especially our most challenging ones. His kindness creates a positive environment where Falls and Epic students thrive. His tireless work ethic and team-player attitude are unmatched on our campus, and we're very fortunate to have him as part of our team. Ms. Harris, Coach truly embodies what it means to love them where they are. He goes out of his way to make sure every student feels like he has their back. Whether it's the garden, in the halls, or in the classroom, he's always teaching, loving, and inspiring our students. Dennis Rose, Ronnie is one of the nicest individuals I've ever had the pleasure to work with. His wit, smile, and wisdom shine through everything he does. He does his best to ensure that every student he works with succeeds. I would personally like to add that Coach Scares is currently assisting a former Marble Falls High School student to finish credits to graduate, and he's working with them. The gentleman is actually 78 years old and is ill, and so Ronnie helps him when he's able to do work. And so, that just goes to show even more, I mean, it's more than just that student engagement for instruction for that lesson. Ronnie truly embodies our mission statement, and so please help me in congratulating Coach Scares as a May Spotlight on Excellence, Engagement.
I'd like to say something about Coach Scares. You know, I came in '82, and Coach Scares came in '81. We've known him a long time, and I'll say it here, this is the only time I'm saying it, okay? You're never going to find a greater kid, guy, man, okay, that loves kids, works with them, does everything he can do, and you have to really be around him to really understand how much he's put into this town and this athletic program. He's always been there, he's always done things for the kids, taken them home, fed them, took care of them, anything you can do, he's done, and he's still doing it. He only worked two days because he's gotten old and kind of crippled, but he is really, he's probably a lot, you know, better than he looks, so it's all going to be okay. And I love him, and I've loved him for 43 years, and we've been buddies, we've had a lot of, lot of trips, and I'm not telling on you, I'm not going to tell you how you did, but there's not a finer person that's been here at the school and done as much for kids every single year. And he's had some health problems, and even during all of his, his little health problems, he has been there for the children of Marble Falls ISD. If you want to know somebody to be really proud for, that's the man right there. I hope you remember him. He built that Dead Gun baseball field down there just about by himself. So, I just got a lot of memories, and they're good, and I can't think of one bad one, and I'm just, I'm honored, I get to know him, and I've known him for so long. Thank you.
Coach Scares, you got any words of wisdom for us, or anything you'd like to say? We appreciate you. All right, let's see. If y'all are just hanging out for awards and stuff, this might be a good time to slip out. If you want to stick with us for the rest of the meeting, feel free, but we take a little break here. I'll come, I'm going to circle back to citizen comments while people slip out. We'll do information items, general fund summary, expenditure report, special awareness dates. Those were mostly in your packet. Any questions on any of those? Huh? Oh, let's take an actual break? Okay, let's take an actual break for a second. We'll stand adjourned for recess at 6:47. We'll have-- We'll have... Let's, uh, reconvene into open session. It's, uh, 6:50 PM. Let's finish out those information items. General Fund Summary, Expenditure Report, we're all in the packet. Any questions on those? Dr. Gasaway, Special Awareness Dates?
We just have one, the Second Wednesday in May, Public School Paraprofessional Day and Recognition of Educational Paraprofessionals, including Teaching Assistant, Instructional Age, Educational Trainers, Library Attendants, Bilingual Assistants, Special Education Assistants, Mentors, and Tutors. And it's regularly observed, and I know our principals recognized our paraprofessionals on that day. So thank y'all very much.
Very good. We need them to function, and they are very good at what they do. All right, uh, let's circle back to citizen comments. Ms. Bochiers, we got one citizen comment, and, uh, we just take these three minutes at a time. And, um, I'll start it and let you know if we get close to that three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, first off, if you, um, don't, if you're not told enough as a board member how much you are appreciated, and I'm very sorry, I'm emotional tonight, but if you are not told enough that you are appreciative for the work that you do, and if you've never ran in an election, um, I encourage people to get out and do so. And if you have, thank you. Thank you for putting yourself vulnerable to the community. Um, so with that being said, um, good evening, Dr. Gasaway and Board of Trustees. Um, my name is Michelle Bochiers, and I'm proudly married to Gary Bochiers, who holds place one on the Marble Falls ISD School Board. I would like to take a moment to say, Gary Bochiers, I love you so much, and I'm so incredibly proud of you. The past few months have been so difficult for our family during this election process. I am beyond proud of you for the humility that you have shown through it all. You chose Marble Falls as a place to graduate, as a place to raise your family, and we've been here for more than 18 years. You maintain a positive attitude even when our friends were bullied by others in this community for supporting you. It was heartbreaking to watch others who had an agenda seek to be negative in our hometown. I hope whenever folks look back, they realize that it's not necessary or worth it. It takes just as much effort to love somebody than it does to cause harm. Your, I encourage people to understand that you have to have a heart for people, no matter whose side you're on. Folks should be proud of our community and MFISD that more people want to get involved. The election process turned nasty at times, and folks would tell you, Gary, don't get involved in politics if you can't take the trash and disrespect that comes with it. People tried to silence you. They called you on your phone and told you that they challenged your freedom of speech, but you stood firm and didn't let it break you. You were treated very unfairly at times, and unfortunately, even in front of our children. You never let their words define you, and you continue to love this district. The kids and I stayed strong because we know how deeply you care about this district and the people that you serve with. You love every part of it, the students, the teachers, the administrative staff, the workers, the bus drivers, custodians, kitchen staff, support staff, the coaches, and so many more. You ran the campaign just the way that you did in 2016. You didn't change who you are or your approach. You were present at the polls. You participated in Q and A with local judges and answered questions from the papers in the community. The only thing different this time was a request for a recount, you being the only candidate who showed up, us having to hire an election attorney, and taking a poll-watching class that I had to do in two hours before our daughter's choir concert, and having to count thousands of ballots by hand for seven hours of time that you and I can never get back. Please know that you are a man of integrity, grit, love, confidence, respect, and curiosity. And that, I believe, is why the community came out, not just to vote for a name, but to vote for you, my husband, the father of our children, a man of respect, Gary Bochiers.
Okay, uh, let's see. We, um, have some business to get to, quite a bit of business to get to, but I also want to be respectful. We've got at least one, um, position that we need to try to get approved. It's all the way at the end of the agenda. And so, um, Dr. Gasway suggested maybe we would move this, um, executive session up to right now and see if we can get this out of the way. Um, and so let's see, we will, I'm trying to find it here, sorry, stumbling a little bit. Um, let's see, so let's, uh, go into executive session under Discussion of Board Reorganization, Texas Government Code 551.074, Discussion of Professional Personnel, including the hiring of Spice Wood Elementary School Principal, Texas Government Code 551.074. Um, let's go into executive session at 6:56 PM. Okay, we are back in open session at 7:28 PM. Let's see, we've got Discussion and Possible Approval, this is 14A, uh, from Action arising from Executive Session. We're going to do a two, Possible Approval of Professional Personnel, including Spice Wood Elementary Principal, Dr. Gasway.
Recommendation from the District to approve personnel, uh, list as presented in closed session.
Motion by Ms. Tubing. Second by Mr. Bochiers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
With that, Mr. Noman and Board, I would like to introduce you and have her come to the podium, the new principal at Spice Wood Elementary School, Ms. Tiffany Brantley. Ms. Brantley went through a, a process, but I will tell you, she was, uh, for that staff, they are very, very excited about her, her leadership, and the great things she's done already, and the hopes built on the great things that are going to happen under her leadership. So with that...
Victory speeches?
Honestly, it's, it's, the only thing I want to say is, um, this has been a process, but I, it is amazing that I have in front of me, I see this word "love" all the time. I said this to the staff today when it was announced, is this process has truly, truly, truly shown me love. The support I've been getting just, uh, from parents and, um, my family, colleagues, friends, um, I've got family listening right now from different places, and then my family in the back who have been amazing these past couple of weeks. And so I'm so excited. I thank you so much for the opportunity, um, that you've entrusted me with, and I cannot wait to get started. So thank you.
Ms. Brantley, introduce us to your family before you leave.
Yes, so I have my amazing husband, John Brantley. I have my interviewer coach, Charles Brantley. And then my headshot coordinator, who took my headshots, Hudson Brantley. It was a family event.
Congratulations, well deserved. We're looking forward to, uh, getting it going as well. Board comments? Go ahead. All right, let's take, um, should we take a five, y'all want to take, let's take a five-minute recess and just congratulate Ms. Brantley, and then we'll get back, uh, into the rest of this in just a moment. We're 7:31. 35 PM, we'll get back to, into open session here. Let's get back on track here. Let's, uh, go to 10A, Presentation Discussion Items, Possible Action, Delinquent Tax Collection Report. Mr. Reyes.
Good evening, evening, members of the Board. Uh, it's always good to see y'all, Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, um, all of you. Uh, this is just going to take a couple of minutes. Uh, it is our annual report on, uh, collections, revenues. So if at any point you have any questions, please, please don't hesitate. You have, uh, provided a booklet for each of you, and it contains quite a bit of information. I'm going to summarize it. I'm only going to talk about three or four different figures that I think give us a good idea of where the collections program is at. Uh, so, uh, without further ado, we can get into it. Uh, and just as a reminder, uh, the tax calendar, tax bills normally go out in October, sometimes November. Folks have until the end of January to pay without penalties and interest. On February 1st, whatever is unpaid begins to accrue penalties and interest. Uh, then on July 1st, whatever remains unpaid is then turned over to my law firm for collections. So about eight or nine months after bills go out, we begin to collect the delinquent taxes. So just keep that, keep that in, um, in mind. If you'll go with me to page three on your reports, and it's the first slide on, um... Okay, there it is, yeah, very good. Uh, Total Revenue from Tax Collections. Uh, this is an annual measurement of what we do, uh, as a percentage of your tax levy. We take, uh, to, uh, current year taxes plus all delinquent tax year collections, plus penalties and interest, and we measure that against your total, uh, against your tax levy of each year. Okay, so for 2023, for example, fiscal year ending 6/30/24, which is at the very top there, the adjusted tax levy was $61,474,000 roughly. Total current plus delinquent collections was $61,134,000. Penalty and interest collected on delinquent taxes was $595,000. So your total revenue from tax collections was $61,730,421 for a percentage of 100.42%. So of that $61,474 adjusted tax levy, uh, $59 million, and it's not up there, but $59,777,000 was paid prior to July 1st. And what wasn't paid, about, uh, under $2 million, was then turned over to us. So about $2 million of that total revenue from tax collections, $61,730,000, is your delinquent tax collections. Okay, uh, just, uh, uh, rough number there. Every year in Marble Falls ISD, we collect over 100%. Um, you know, we have a goal of collecting at least 98%. The state requires 95% or above, uh, and after a certain period of time, if that percentage is not met, it could affect state funding, meaning Marble Falls ISD could send more to the state. Uh, so we don't want that to happen, right? Uh, so it's not a problem, though. We are always, uh, over 100% here. So you can see for '22, 100.34, '21, 100.87, and '20, 101.96. Any questions about this? If you'll go to page, uh, page four of your reports, um, this is what we call cumulative tax collections. Um, I'm not sure how to get it up on the... Cumulative tax collections, you know, we went over tax levy, uh, what we collected over the year in all tax revenues versus tax levy. This is just the individual tax levy of each year collected over time. Tax year 2023, again, $61,474,000 was the, uh, was the tax levy for the year. What we've collected already, um, is $60,978,000. So all that remains due to be paid is $495,000. Normally, we will collect almost 100% on this, uh, in just a couple of years. So... So, as you can see there, the cumulative collections are 99.19, 99.48, 99.72, 99.75. With, as, as time goes by, we will collect pretty much 100%. Is there any questions about this? The next one, just a couple more things to discuss and that'll conclude our report. The next one is delinquent tax collections. Okay, this is what is turned over on July 1st to my law firm for collections. I mentioned that the 2023 tax levy was $1.695 million. That was, that was turned over to MVBA for collections on July 1st of 2024. In 10 months of collection, because this report is as of April 30th, 2025, we've collected $1.2 million of the $1.695 million. So, all that remains is $495,000. That is, that is being collected at a very rapid pace. I shoot for at least 50 to 60% collected in the first 12 months, and I think that's a healthy figure. But here, of course, at Marble Falls ISD, we're well above that. So, and the same for 2022, '21, '20. As more time, as more time takes place, as more collection activities take place, I should say, we will collect pretty close to 100%. Are there any questions about this? One last figure to discuss. If, if you'll go with me too, on your booklets, it is page nine. This is what is outstanding for all tax years that are currently unpaid, okay, at Marble Falls ISD, $1.585 million. Now, some of these go back as far as 20 years that are not paid. Why? Because of, because of what we call tax deferrals. And I'll discuss that in a minute. But while that $1.585 figure might seem like a lot, keep in mind that it is the only amount that has not been collected for the last 20 years' worth of tax levy. For 2023 alone, it was $61 million, right? 62, almost $62 million. Multiply that by your last 20-year tax levies and this is all that remains unpaid, which is almost nothing, relatively speaking, right? Now, of course, we're working to collect all of that as well. One of the things that we have here is that tax deferrals are, the amount of tax deferrals in Marble Falls ISD is pretty high. It makes up about 36% of everything that is outstanding and uncollected. So, of that $1.585 billion, basically, the first $575,000 we cannot collect because it isn't a tax deferral. A tax deferral is when an individual that is over 65 or meets certain disability requirements applies for the postponement of taxes on his or her resident's homestead. And as long as they live in that home, they can postpone their taxes until sometime in the future when they no longer live in that home for whatever reason. So, that's, that amount that is unpaid is $575,000. There's nothing we can do about that right now. At some point, when the deferral is removed, then we begin collections on that. So, that leaves us with everything else. We already have $444,000 in back taxes in a delinquent tax lawsuit where we're attempting to recover in court because we're required to do so through a, through the judicial process. And the rest are just various levels of research and progress. Some of them could be informal payouts. Some of the taxes are informal payouts. You can see $46,000 is in pre-litigation payouts. But we also have a number of the research and progress being in informal payment plans. So, we keep an eye on that as well. Any questions about this? It's a pretty, pretty lean here. And of course, our, as a reminder, our fee for the law firm is not paid out of any kind of school funds. It is a 20% fee that is added on July 1st to whatever remains unpaid. And as that gets collected, that is how my firm is compensated. The, we don't only provide also delinquent tax collections. We provide an array of services that's included in the package, which includes taxable value studies, taxable value audits, property value studies, short, short-term reporting. All of those are ways that we get money back from the state that we've sent through, through recapture. So, we've collected a pretty, pretty good, quite a bit of funds for a number of reasons. I won't, I won't, I won't go into that, but we keep an eye on it and every, every, every way that we can, we will apply for, for the, the school district to receive additional funds from the state, so. Any other questions? Hope that wasn't too boring, so.
Glad you're doing your job.
Yeah.
Questions, comments, board? Anybody? See, do we need to, I guess probably approve this report? Do we need to approve this report?
I don't think it's necessary.
Very good.
Just information, so.
All right. Thank you for your time and appreciate your, your work.
Thank you.
All right, item 10B is 2025, 2026 Budget Discussion. Mr. Orr. You've got all those taxes to work with.
Yeah. Well, I wanted tonight to go over what all we knew about next year's budget, so it won't take very long. So, I wanted to start with last year's budget. You know, we had adopted a $1,079,000 deficit budget with the intention of a Vader election that the election did, or the vote did fail. So, we removed, in February, we removed 2.1 million of revenue and we removed $950,000 of salary increases that was dependent on that Vader. So, now we're looking at a deficit budget amended at 2.2 million. We went through and cut back on personnel with the goal of meeting 2.4 million, and we, we've just about got that, depending on what we hire our future vacancies at. So, we're, we're on track with that. And so, that kind of sets us up. We wanted to get that deficit out so that when the legislature passes something, then we're, we're at an even keel. And so, I feel like that's where we are right now. If you go right now, Austin is talking about House Bill 2. The House passed that. The Senate has substituted their bill in there with that or against that. And so, if you look at statewide, the bill, they're looking at appropriating somewhere between $8 and $9 billion, both the House and the Senate. On the House side, they're increasing the basic allotment by $395,000. And that would require us to put two, or require this school district to put in 2.4 billion in teacher salary increases and .8 billion in other salary increases for personnel. The, on the Senate side, they are talking about a $4.2 billion salary increase for teachers and no salary increase for anyone else. And so, and then they're going to add on top of that $55 in the basic allotment, adjusted basic allotment. So, there's, there's very little, in fact, the, there's very little in there for anything but the teacher salary increases. In rural schools, I'm sure what you've heard is that if you've got three or four years' experience, it's a $5,000 increase and it goes on into the future. But if, at year five and above, it's $10,000 per student for every teacher that we have. And so, and if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. If you look at it from Marble Falls ISD, and these are kind of my estimates, we have some templates that we can work with. Mo Casey is a, is a firm that, that we're a member of their organization and they're giving us some information. But it looks like the House version would give us about $2.5 million in additional revenue. There's a whole lot to the bill. There's a lot of specifics. Some of it's safety money, some, you know, there's just different areas, pre-K, early childhood. But basically, we would end up with about $2.5 million per year. What I showed you on the statewide was, that was two years, if you try to do the math. So, anyway, teacher salaries, we would, we would be required to increase our teacher salaries by $750,000. That's somewhere around 5% pay increase. And then we would be required to take $250,000 in other areas. I don't think that would be enough. We would want to look at that a little harder to, and maybe, maybe put more salaries in there. But the discretionary amount that we would have, it would be $1.5 million. This is very workable. There are, like I said, a lot of details in there that, that are not going to be pleasant, but that's not a, a bad bill there, in my opinion. On the Senate side, we don't know how much the revenue is. Mo Casey's been working on estimating that for all the school districts. They told us they'd have it out today and today's not over, so we'll see. But teacher salary increases, if, if we gave out what they say for every employee that we have on the teacher salary scale, it would be 2.6 million, which I don't see that there's enough money in their appropriation to do that statewide. The only thing I can think of is there may be a different interpretation of what is an instructional classroom teacher. But that, but there's no other money for salaries, so we don't know what our discretionary revenue is. So, I have one other slide. There we go. So, if we, if you look at the salary schedule, the bottom line, the purple one, is our current 24, 25 salary schedule. The House version, I just took the $750,000 and spread it out evenly. And you can see what kind of salary schedule we had. If that passes, we'll, we'll tweak that and, and probably, you know, try to bend the curve a little bit and get more into that five-year range. But if you look at, at the Senate version, it just jumps it up tremendously. And it's for every teacher from five years on. And so, you can see that doesn't give us any flexibility at all to try to, to, to plan out, you know, the, the future budgets that we have, so. And with that, I'm, you know, we're going to find out as soon as we can, when is the send die? Is it June 2nd? So, I'm looking forward to June 2nd getting an answer. But anyway, we're, we're, we're going to be working on our campus budgets and things of that nature. We, we have set a priority of, or emphasis on salaries, medical benefits, and campus budgets. And so, we're going to be looking at those, try to get that ready so we can have something for you at our next meeting. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More to come. Federal funds intent to apply. Ms. Lefle.
Good evening. I'm here to provide you an overview of the federal and state grant funding for the district. Administration's required to annually provide you an update and then have your approval to apply for the federal funds for the '25, '26 school year. First thing I just wanted to review again is entitlement allotment versus competitive grant. I'm really reviewing entitlements with you. That is what the state gives us. Competitive grants, we do always watch out for those, see what we can apply for. Remember, a lot of times, there's some give and take. How much do we have to give to be able to get the grant? Sometimes it's worth the squeeze, sometimes not. These are our planning amounts for '25, '26. Can you see the big question marks right there? They have not released our planning amounts yet. Mr. Orr needs to submit our application in June so that our budget year for July 1 comes open. Mr. Orr, Dr. Garcia, and I attended a conference approximately one month ago in which we learned about the uncertainty of federal funds. All of the lead grant and compliance staff from TEA were at the conference and spoke. Last week on Tuesday, May 13th, we received notice that TEA was adjusting its process to publish planning amounts since one piece from the federal government would not be released till even July 1st. And so, Corey Green actually asked, would you, do y'all want us to release anything? And we were like, yes, release something, all the finance people, everyone. And so, he said that he would work on, he's the Associate Commissioner under this, he said that he would work on releasing a conservative planning amount for districts. So, last Tuesday, they said that they would release planning amounts on Wednesday. Then on Wednesday, they released a communication saying that they released the planning amounts for the special education consolidated and for the Perkins, but that the ESSA, the ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act, would not be released until May 19th. Then one day later, on Thursday, they released a communication saying that it would be May 21st. And so, I just want to point out that the Texas Education Agency is struggling and coming up with amounts. And they said that they would release amounts based on the latest that the U.S. Department of Education would have. They explained a lot of things to us that Mr. Orr might jump in in a second in regards to what the, what Congress can mess with or not mess with. And so, really, when we look at our title funds, Title I, Title III are the main two that are most secure. Title II could possibly mess with, it comes up each time. This just, it shows, so the reason why I did put these on here is because last year when I did this with you all, it said 24, 25 planning. And so, those are our final amounts then that ended up coming in for our grants. If you look here, then, we do have our planning amount for Perkins and we have our planning amount under special education. Many of these amounts, as you can tell, have gone down. Once they finalize, a lot of times, it ends up not being as much down as possible. Last year, when I showed you this, we were estimating based on planning amounts, having $229,000 less than '23, '24. In the end, it ended up being $119,000 less, so $100,000, I guess not as bad as what we thought, but it was still bad. We still received $119,000 left. Right now, for IDEA and for Perkins, that shows how much less that we, the planning amount is compared to the final amount from last year. These are other grants that we've closed, just so you can see grants that we've closed and that we've worked on. The ones in pink are grants that we still have. That's not the amount left, that's the amount that was awarded. Mr. Orr tracks our, tracks our grants on here. And so, all of these pinks are grants, are entitlements. Some of them are competitive, like the 21st Century Learning one, that's competitive. Not very many districts got that. Dr. Fancher did an excellent job as a grant writer for us. Safety and facilities grants, those are things in which Mr. Orr and Mr. Whittle had to fill out for us to receive those, that money. And then we received a Lasso Cycle 3. And then teacher incentive allotments, really a program. Just a couple of things to keep in mind right now, TEA is being conservative in what they release us, so it could look a lot lower than previously. But they are trying to gauge information that they receive from the U.S. Department of Education. We will receive, most likely, you know, close to what we've received for Title I previously. It's a significant amount for us. I'll let Mr. Orr hop in if he thinks there's anything additional.
And mainly what, what I got from the, from what they were saying was that they were just going to release, normally they release, what, 95, 96% of the money? And then in, in January, all the schools that didn't take the money, they, they reallocate. And they just said that they were going to increase or decrease the percentage that they let out, so it might come in at 92%, something like that. So, you'll see a drop in there. The one thing that, that they said they didn't have was the statistics that they needed from Washington in order to tell the schools how much they had. So, they're lowering their percentage until they get that percentage to where they can bring it up to where the true allocation is, so.
Excuse me, one question. The ACE program, is that under one of these grants or is that a separate?
Yes, sir, that's under the 21st Century Learning Grant.
Is that like a five-year cycle?
Yeah, that's a, that's a five-year cycle and we're in our second year. Yeah, that's a, that's a five-year cycle, and we're in our second year.
Okay, so we still have three more years of that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Cause I know that's been useful to our district for sure.
So, this is first read in June, is when we would seek approval, because Mr. Orr needs to submit our application before the end of June. He probably has a target date in which he wishes to submit, and we just need your approval, um, before, uh, for him to submit our application for federal funds.
And I can do it as soon as they give me the numbers.
We don't have the numbers right now.
Questions, comments about this? Is there anything that's gonna change between now and then? Should we, like, is there, would it hurt anything to approve it tonight, or do you need to?
It would be helpful to prove it tonight. I can go ahead and get, get started on the planning and, and, uh, have it ready to. I want to try to have it in place on July one. That way, we can start next year with, with all the.
And if, if approved tonight, we would just, once we have those numbers, we would send them in a Friday note to the board to just verify the numbers. Send you the PowerPoint with updated information.
Anybody want to make a motion on this tonight?
I'll move that we approve the, the administration to move forward in applying for federal and state grant funds for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Motion by Mr. Verdel. Second by Mr. Boshiers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Very good. Optional Flexible School Day Program, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six application. Ms. Lefley, go ahead.
Each year, the administration requests that you approve the MFISD to submit the Optional Flexible School Day application. It's required that I do go over a couple items with you, and that's what I'm gonna go over really quick with you here. Program requirements, the goal is to allow us to provide a flexible hours and days of attendance for students who meet one of the requirements of the code. Uh, the goal is to improve graduation rates, to keep kids from dropping out of school, recover kids. These are the different, uh, requirements in which a student must meet one of these to be part of the program. Uh, students are still required to take the state assessment on the timeline and on the days that we set. Uh, students are allowed to participate in UIL as long as they meet UIL eligibility rules uh, for attendance. This really is saying, you know, as a district, you're not allowed to count a kid more than once, and so there's a maximum number of minutes that you can count a kid for Optional Flexible, and it's all outlined right there, where you can't exceed forty-three thousand, two hundred minutes. We are required to receive board approval to turn in our application. The application actually requires Mr. Nauman to sign several places, as well as Dr. Gasaway. And this is just to remind you that if we were to mess with things or not be honest and handle the program appropriately, that the commissioner could revoke the program from us. And if he was to revoke the program, it may not be appealed. Um, this year, just for information, our final application was not approved by TEA. We went back and forth and back and forth. Mr. Fields had all of his students attending all day, and we had hit later into the fall and just kind of dropped the communication with TEA. And Mr. Fields ended up not having a student in that situation, nor did the high school. But we kind of lucked out due to that. I've talked to the Texas Education Agency staff and anticipate our application will be approved for twenty-five, twenty-six without a lot of going back and forth. Um, the, uh, cause we can't guarantee if we won't have a student at Falls or at Marble Falls High School who might need the help. Uh, this is first read, um, and so, uh, next steps are board of trustees approval, then submit to TEA and approval from TEA. Um, nothing will change between now and the June meeting. Uh, if you choose to approve this evening, TEA receives our application sooner. I did date it this evening, in case if y'all made that decision. If you choose to approve in June, I'll just redate the application for in June. Uh, that way, whatever you all wish to do, you're able to do, so.
Very good.
Are there any questions?
Comments, motions? Motion by Mr. Boshiers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Contract renewals for instructional materials. Dr. Fields.
Hello. Um, I am bringing to you a proposal for some purchases that we need to make. Um, TEA has changed the timeline for some of our instructional materials renewals, which caused us to have some materials that would have a few gap years before the next time those materials are up for adoption or, or approval cycle. And so, those resources are listed here. Social studies, um, languages other than English, which for us would be Spanish, and then some of our CTE courses. So, we had allocated the remainder of our biennium. We were in year two of the biennium for instructional materials allotment. We had allocated about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for this purchase. Um, we can take care of what we need to with these materials with a hundred, about a hundred thousand dollars, and that would give us the money left over to purchase the, uh, NWA map resources that Ms. Lefley brought to you at the last meeting. So, we, we came in under what we were, what we were hoping for with that. That will include training for our teachers to use these resources. And I would like to point out that these are the same resources that we currently have. So, we're sticking with resources we have. We've already made investments in the print resources. This will just keep our online and our training going for the next few years. Um, I'm not sure I don't have anything else I wanted to say about that. I don't think so. I think that was all I needed to, needed to say. Um, this is a first read, but I will bring it back in June for approval.
Questions, comments? Anybody want to get this one out of the way?
I'll make a motion to approve purchasing the social studies, LOTE, and CTE materials listed above as recommended, not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Motion by Mr. Payson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Tubig. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Potential purchase of band instruments. Ms. Lefley.
Yes, sir. Marble Falls ISD band program is growing and is in need of additional instruments. You receive two lists of instruments. The first list includes large brass items, like tubas, sousaphones, and euphoniums, as well as a couple obos and bassoons. All of these instruments, that, all of these instruments are standard for schools, even colleges, to provide. Right now, some of these are to go to the middle school and some to the high school. For instance, currently, a bassoon player at the middle school is using a thirteen thousand dollar bassoon that belongs to the high school. We need that bassoon to go back to the high school for a player, and we need to purchase middle school appropriate bassoons for the middle school that are cheaper than thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, and then tubas, euphoniums, and sousaphones, those are all, uh, sousaphones are high school only for the marching band. But tubas and euphoniums, some of those are for the middle school, and some of those are for the high school. You notice a couple of the tubas say three-fourths. That's because they're three-fourths the size, and those are for middle school students. The second list is also due to growth and for six flutes. Even though more and more parents rent or buy instruments in Marble Falls ISD than before, we still have a number of families that do rely on us to provide, and so six flutes, that is the estimate uh, that would be needed next year due to growth. Um, we are recommending approval on first read due to current economic conditions that creates some instability with ordering and guaranteeing of pricing that Mr. Orr is going to explain to you.
All right, thank you. Uh, and we started looking at these and, and looking at first read and second read, and we realized that with the uncertainty with tariffs, that these instruments, some of them are from, from overseas, and we don't, other countries, and so we don't know, they can't keep the quote to go past thirty days. And so, we thought, we felt that the only direction that the price would go is up. And so, we decided to get the quote and are asking for, for you to approve it on first read.
Very good. Questions, comments?
Yep. I just, as we, um, as we hit F, G, H, and I, I do want to make sure, and, and I mentioned this, uh, even though I only sent it out this morning, unfortunately, but I mentioned it in my team note, um, that we're finishing the twenty-eighteen bond. These are out of those funds. Uh, what little we have left, that F, G, H, and I will, I will see a portion of that, but that, these are all related to that. And so, when you see that it says out of bond funds, it's talking about, uh, draining the, the remainder of that to address the needs that are being presented tonight.
Does that get them all the way cleared out?
It does. By the, by I, we will be done with that.
All right. Questions, comments on this? Motions, anybody?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of band.
Motion by Mr. Boshiers.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCary. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Potential purchase of transportation vehicle. Ms. Whittle, vehicles.
All right, good evening. Um, Transportation Department is seeking approval of, uh, three district vehicles. Um, from several of the, all of these were totaled last year's hailstorm. Um, if you'll recall, in the fall, you, the board approved, um, Toyota Sienna Hybrid minivans, and those have been an absolute hit. Uh, all of us who have had the opportunity to drive those, um, really enjoy them. Uh, they, they've been a tremendous, um, purchase for us, so we're asking that, we'd like two more. Twenty-twenty-five Toyota Sienna Hybrid minivans. Uh, those are eight-passenger. Um, one of those vehicles would be dedicated to our special services for our, um, transition house students. They commute to and from school, job site, back to the transition house, uh, daily, and so, uh, this would be an upgrade for them. The other one would just go into the general, um, operation, daily operational fleet, uh, for the white vehicles. And those are, combined for, for the two of those are eighty thousand, five ninety-four, so four, forty thousand, one hundred apiece. Um, the third vehicle, uh, Transportation would like to purchase a fourteen-passenger, um, bus. This is similar to the People Mover, um, bus that we have, but instead of it being white, uh, we'd like for this one to be yellow so that we could also use it. It would give us flexibility in routes, um, to and from school. Plus, you do not have to have a CDL license to drive a fourteen-passenger bus, so that provides more flexible options for, for drivers. So, thirteen passengers plus the driver, uh, fourteen total, and that is in stock. All three of these vehicles are in stock. The, the Collins School Bus, fourteen passengers, in Waco at, um, at Rush, and then the, the Toyota Siennas are in Sillsby. Uh, but they're all in stock, and Gina said that we could have them, if approved tonight, by the end of the month, um, which would be a big help to our Transportation Department. And so, with that, um, entertaining, any questions?
Questions, comments, motions?
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of two Toyota Sienna minivans and one Collins School Bus in a total amount of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Sorry about that. Motion by Mr. Payson. Second by Ms. Tubig. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Continue on with potential purchase of softball field upgrades.
All right. Um, Coach Timmerman and Coach Lozoya have met. Mackie Price has been in meetings with them and have walked the softball field numerous times, um, and, and have identified, uh, needs, areas that we need to address uh, to get our softball field improvements started. And so, uh, with the remaining two thousand and eighteen bond funds, uh, we would like to propose some of the initial work. Uh, one would be to install a new netting system, um, replace the chain link fence that's in the back, backstop area, and install a thirty-foot tall netting system that would, that would increase, um, then, you know, decrease the number of foul balls that are going into the bleachers, cause it would be taller, but also the overall viewing experience from the fans, uh, to get that updated. Um, also, looking at adding a bullpen area to our visitor side, where their pitchers can warm up and, and get ready during the games. We have a bullpen that's at the home side, but that needs to be, uh, kind of reworked and regraded. Uh, put some new, uh, you know, foundation base for, uh, decomposed granite in the bullpen areas. Um, also, installing new helmet racks, painting the backstop wall, handrails. Uh, press box needs some soffit, uh, touch up there, and then some new paint. Um, helmet racks, both the visitor and home dugouts, and then painting the scoreboard supports. Also included in this amount would be, uh, new backstop padding. And so, with all of those items, looking at, um, a total of one hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and we feel like this would get us a good start. Um, if approved, they would be able to start June second with work at the softball field. And then later, we would be able to look at, um, several other items that we, that we address, some drainage, um, on the field, you know, that can be addressed when they put in the new, uh, turf, and then also some grading and, and drainage over to the clubhouse area. And, um, we'll also need to look at fencing after, after the turf gets put in. Um, and we'll have further discussions with baseball and softball. We'll, we'll, we'll have, um, some upgrades to fencing at that point. Poten- potentially. So, um, these six items would, would give us a good start at the softball field, and we are asking that the board, uh, consider approval of American Constructors uh, to oversee that projects and make improvements to the softball field in the amount one hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Questions, comments?
One quick question. Sam, how did you select, uh, American Constructors for the project?
Job, job order contract. Yeah. Mackie, can you help me with that, please?
So, job order contract is a lot like tips or by board. It's done through an RFQ.
Other questions, comments, motions?
I, I do have one quick question. How close is the softball field to the baseball field, the current baseball field?
How close in proximity?
Aren't they next door?
They are next door. There's a concession stand in between.
So, there's no, no, I'm just imagining, like, construction going on where that, where the old baseball field is. There's not gonna be any damage to the softball field. Like, we shouldn't invest, I, I'm just saying, make sure we're gonna invest money there, that it's gonna be fine. There's not gonna be construction vehicles parked on it or anything weird like that, right? Okay. Yeah. Okay. It doesn't, doesn't seem like we've given softball any love in years, so, okay, thanks.
I, I will say, I think this, I, I don't disagree with you, and I, I think this is a good first step, that there's funds, not only for the turf allocated for softball, there's three hundred thousand as far as their, uh, facilities that's addressed in Prop A of, of the bond. And then, like Stan said, the final components that are really not spelled out in the, in the bond, or what we're doing tonight, is some regrading that will, will be addressed, um, when we do the turf, and some fencing that will be done. And so, I think it will, by the end of the works that's done, I think it will, um, be in a much, much different place.
Anything else? Motions? Do you want to take this tonight?
I'll make a motion that we approve American Constructors to make the improvements to the Marble Falls High School softball field in the amount of one hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Motion by Mr. Verdel.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCary. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Marble Falls High School Roof Replacements. Bandhall, weight room, training room, Max Copeland Gym, Mr. Whittle.
So, this, this project will be, um, funded several different ways. The remaining funds from twenty-eighteen, that will close out the, the twenty-eighteen bond funds. Um, and then we have funding from, for our insurance already, set aside for that. And so, um, both of those will be used on this project. So, this is really the first four roof replacements, other than the outbuildings. Um, you'll recall, we, we, board approved that. Work's already been done on the Ag Building, um, softball dugouts, the press box for the stadium, um, the, the, um, fieldhouse and concession stand areas. All of those have been done. And so, this would be the, the current bandhall, the weight room, training room, and then the Max Copeland Gymnasium. Those four roofs, and this would be removing, um, and replacing with, uh, standing seam metal roof that is, um, it'll be red, same color that it was, uh, is, and it includes a twenty-year, uh, warranty, also a two-year workmanship warranty, and this includes removal and, um, and adding the new roofs. And so, And so this comes out to a total of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. And Administration is requesting approval of LBK Roofing. That, that's the roofers that did the outbuildings as well to replace the roofs at Marble Falls High School Band Hall, Weight Room, Training Room, and the Max Copeland Gym. The timeline on that would be if, if approval would take roughly three weeks for materials to arrive and then likely, hopefully get started on June ninth. And it would take about two to three weeks to finish all four. This is a big project for them. And, you know, usually it's about thirty days, but he said this would have a, a large crew working on all four of those roofs. Could be finished in, in three weeks.
Questions, comments? Anybody want to make a motion on this one?
I just moved that we approve LBK Roofing to replace the roofs at the high school Band Hall, Weight Room, Training Room, and Max Copeland Gym in the amount of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Motion by Mr. Brochiers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payson. Any discussion?
I had, I had one question. With all the summer weightlifting and various programs going during the summer, does this impact the ability for those to happen? I mean, I know you gotta do it sometime, so.
You'll work around with all the coaches and stuff.
Okay. So there'll still be places where they can adjust and still get their things, their workouts in?
Yeah, all that would be scheduled down. Weightlifting is over by ten thirty, eleven o'clock in the morning every day, so they have the rest of the afternoon to work on it, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Budget amendment for the high school roof replacements, Mr. Orr.
Okay, you have in your package the proposed budget amendment. What I'd done is I've included the February budget amendment so that you can see the progression of the budget. The last three columns are what we're going to talk about right now. The, I've done, I've broken it up into two different amendments. The first one is to appropriate funds out of the proceeds from the insurance of six hundred and fifty thousand. That's an estimate of what the 2019 bond funds won't pay for. But if you look down below other resources, that is all of the resources that we've, that the, the insurance proceeds that we have received this year. We did receive nine hundred and sixty thousand in twenty-four, twenty-five. So we're increasing our estimated revenue by seven million eight hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-four. This money will go into reserves, what is unspent. And so that's the first part. The second part, I'm asking you to reserve part of that fund balance, or assign it actually, to show that that's how much money we have left of the insurance proceeds that are unspent. And, and you can at any time unassign it. It just will make it more understandable in our audit report that that's where these funds are from. And we have this, this future liability or expectation of spending those funds. The, and the amount that, of the assignment is the nine hundred and sixty thousand we received last year, the seven million five hundred and seventy-four thousand that we have received so far, minus the six hundred and fifty that I'm asking you to appropriate tonight. If we do receive some more funds before the end of June, then I'll probably come to you with the, and ask you to reserve even more, or that amount. Any questions on that?
Do you know if we, maybe that's a question you can't answer, but do we expect to receive any more insurance funds in the coming year or years?
Yeah, we should receive some in the next few weeks. I'm not sure exactly when.
Stan's working with our insurance to, there's a conversation ongoing where it's over one more, at least the anticipation of one more payment of over a million dollars that we're anticipating with our insurance. They, Stan and our insurance have had some very fruitful conversations that have gone well.
And do we know if that amount will be enough to cover what we expect our roof repairs to be? Or are we going to have to dip into other funds for that?
I, I think that with the roofs we have that are end of life, that would be covered by the 2025 bond combined with what we've received in insurance, that we're going to be in a very good place. That I don't, I don't anticipate we're going to have to come back and address any roofs that aren't covered through either end of life that we would have addressed through the bond or the insurance funds, so.
Thanks. Thank you.
Got one quick question, and it's a small number, but the two hundred and forty-one thousand for the sale of property was, that was some surplus stuff that we got rid of?
No, that's. That's the water tower.
Oh, okay.
The sale into the city, the water towered property.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay. Other questions? Anybody want to make a motion for this budget amendment?
I move we approve the budget amendment as presented.
Motion by Ms. McCary. Second by Ms. Tubig. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Reimbursement Resolution, Dr. Gasaway.
So this is for your consideration to adopt a resolution expressing our intent to finance expenditures that will be incurred. This is a common practice that districts will do. Julie, if you'll switch the, to the other attachment, the resolution, if you don't mind. And just, I'm going to have that in the background once you get it. And so one of the things that may jump out to you is, is in section two, it says right below, there we go, stop right there. It says fifty-five million dollars. Do we anticipate we're going to spend fifty-five million dollars before we have the bond funds? Absolutely not, but it will allow us to start doing work on different projects that we don't have those funds. And in fact, what I would tell you is we'll have very, I don't anticipate we'll have very much spent by the time we get those bond funds. But it gives us the green light that as we have expenses related to some of those projects, and those projects are all the way down. Julie, if you'll go to the very last page, thank you, right there. That this is where it really gives us kind of a focus on, these are the things that we're looking at. And it really, to be, to be completely honest, it's, it's really just Prop A, Prop B, Prop C, Prop D. It gives us that ability to, that if we were to exceed fifty-five million, we would have to come back to y'all. But if we exceed fifty-five million, man, holy cow, are we working fast. And also, we, we're going to have Brian Grubbs come next week to talk about sales. In fact, we're going to have a conversation with Brian tomorrow about just the, the process of selling the bonds. But this gives us the green light. So, so what you've witnessed tonight with F, G, H, and I is the closure of the 2018 bond. And this is the kickoff of the 2025 work that we're about to do. And so it, it's, it's almost like that was the last phase, now we're, we're talking about the new phase. And so this is just a reimbursement resolution that gives us the ability to start the work. And you'll hear one of the very first projects that we're going to talk about before the end of the night is Highland Lakes Elementary Drive. That is going to be, that, that would be one that not only are we going to be talking about doing, we hope to have done before we actually have all the bond, bond sold. So, so anyway, I would entertain any questions. I will tell you, this is my first rodeo to do this. And so Mackie will be riding shotgun with me if y'all have questions.
Questions, comments?
What is the approximate timeline of the bond sale and the funds being received?
So we're going to, actually, we've not had that conversation. That's a great question. And, and so tomorrow, Bill and I and Mr. Verdel are going to be with Brian Grubbs in a Zoom for about an hour, I think. And we're going to get a better idea of, of those bond sales. But what he's going to be doing, Brian is going to come to the board meeting on June second and do a presentation on that very topic. Generally speaking, and Bill, you can help me out on this, but generally speaking, it's probably going to be somewhere in August when we sell the bonds.
Yeah, and, and I don't know exactly, but I would anticipate in the next two, three months.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
This resolution doesn't change anything with our standard procedures for purchases or contracts over a certain amount have to come before the.
That's exactly correct. We would, and so the very, you know, one of the ones we'll be bringing towards tonight that I already mentioned is the Highland Lakes Drive that that has to go through the process, that it does not negate any of the rules that apply. If it's above twenty-five thousand, we'll bring it to the board.
Anybody want to make a motion for that resolution?
I'll move that the Board of Trustees adopt the resolution declaring intention to reimburse project expenditures, which is before the board this evening.
Motion by Mr. Verdel. Second by Mr. Bergman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Bond Architect and Engineering Services, Mr. Whittle.
All right, so one of the first orders of business is to retain services of, of an architect. And as you all know, we retain services from Fluger Architects for the pre-bond work. And now that the bond has been approved, the board may amend the contract with Fluger Architects to clarify the scope of work, to include any and all work related to the approved bond projects. Marble Falls ISD Administration recommends that we continue utilizing the services of Fluger Architects for the 2025 bond projects. We feel Fluger is, is our best option in terms of economically and to be able to just hit the ground running with, with these projects. They, they know us, we know them, they know our needs. They, they can swiftly begin the design phase of, of the process for us. I will tell you, if we were to go out for new RFQs with, with other architects, we can do that, but that, that could take additional months to go through that process before we could get started. Again, it's, it's Marble Falls ISD Administration recommendation that we use Fluger Architects for the 2025 bond projects. With that, I would entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments?
Is, is this who we use for the last set of bond projects?
We use them for pre-bond planning.
No, I mean the 2018.
We use for 2018 for pre-bond planning and the, the actual work could be, was who we used.
Sam, that three million and some change, is that for every bond project or it's just for the ones listed here?
Just the ones that are listed.
Is that everything, I'm just passing this list real quick, is that everything that we would need architecture and engineering services for on the list there?
Yeah, no, there, there would be some other projects that, that we would need to discuss later. So this is just specifically for those at the high school for the, you know, the multipurpose and weight room, or yeah, the weight room auxiliary and the new baseball field, softball replacements, additions to the Max Copeland locker rooms, and the, and the new CTE wing.
Is this a max dollar amount or will it decrease, depending on where bids come in at for the specific projects? Because I doubt we're doing all these projects in one fell swoop. We're probably going to do them individually. But I know they're, they're handling all the plans and design for each one. But I'm just asking the question, if that's three point two seven five, is that max? Or can it go down, depending on STDs, CDs, DDs, all those things as they come in and construction bidding comes in accordingly? So it is what it is, whether prices are actually more or less. Because usually it's, a lot of times that number's estimated based on your total budget cost for the projects, aren't they? So, yeah, okay.
No, sir, that, that would be later. So again, this is approved and Fluger just for these specific projects at, at the high school that are listed.
Any other questions? Anybody want to make a motion on this? Do we want to do something different?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the board approve Fluger Architects to be the designer for the above projects in the amount of three point two seven five million dollars.
Motion by Ms. McCary.
Second.
Second by Mr. Verdel. Any discussion?
I've got one more question, just for fun.
Okay.
Do we know out of this total hundred and seventy-two million dollar total bond project, like what percentage of that are we talking about here? Like, is this a hundred million dollars of it, seventy million dollars of it? Like, I'm just trying to get an idea of how much we're paying for these.
About fifty-two, fifty-three million dollars.
Fifty-two million dollars of it?
On their, on their other, the other attachment, yeah.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Are we ready to vote on this? I guess all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Considering possible action to adopt a required prevailing wage rate schedule in connection with any and all 2025 bond projects and other construction projects authorized by the board in 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 school years, Mr. Whittle.
I'm going to say something real, real quick, because I just want to remind, most of y'all have been there. Most of y'all remember, we did this in consent for years and years, and we just kind of got away from it. And so what Stan's picking up, he will probably redo periodically, and so run with it, Stan.
So this is a requirement that we, you know, required by law. Texas Government Code, Section twenty-two, five-eight, point oh-two, to adopt prevailing wages for any construction projects. The last time that we did this again was in 2022. There are two options that are available for public schools when looking at prevailing wages. Either, one, a school district may conduct a survey to determine what the prevailing rate of daily wages is for the community where work will be completed. Or, two, a school district may use the prevailing wage rate as determined by the U.S. Department of Labor through the Davis Bacon Act. So we recommend to continue utilizing prevailing wage rate as determined by the U.S. Department of Labor through the Davis Bacon Act. Additionally, Administration is presenting this for consideration of and possible action to adopt the prevailing wage schedule as presented for Burnet County as determined by the U.S. Department of Labor in accordance with the Davis Bacon Act to be used by all contractors as the prevailing wage schedule for all district construction projects. So the, these are updated a few times a year. Whenever the district goes out for bid, we will first verify what the current rates are and then to include in any of the bid packages. The proposed motion language allows Administration to do that without going back to the board for at least those construction projects that are set out in the timeframe above. And so I have motion language on this. And then moving forward, we'll have this in consent agenda throughout the year.
Very good. Questions, comments?
Just one quick question. We're talking about contractor costs, I think I can get away with this one, is there a way to like express a preference for using local subcontractors when possible?
Well, can you repeat that one more time?
Is there a way for like the district to express a preference for using local subcontractors when possible on these projects? Okay.
I was gonna say, you just did it.
Check.
Thank you.
Other questions? Motion?
Can I make a motion to approve all the beautiful language that Stan just said up there about 30 seconds ago?
Sure. Motion as presented in the.
As presented?
Board packet? Sure. There's a motion by Mr. Payson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bocheers. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, consider and possible action regarding the selection and delivery method for construction services for 2025 bond projects as required by Texas Government Code 2269.056, Mr. Whittle.
Julie, if you could pull up Attachment A spreadsheet, it just shows the different projects and the different delivery methods. And so, this kinda gives you, board, an idea of each of the different projects and kinda the planning that goes into that. And so this is specific to just the delivery method used for each of those projects that provides the best value for the district. And so you can see there that there's really only three delivery methods that we are going to use throughout the course of all of these projects. Really, the number one is construction manager at risk. And what that means is that we would hire a construction manager and they would begin that process, work with the architects on the design phase of it, and once enough design is done, they would give us a kind of a maximum price. And so, if after that was going, and they exceeded the cost of that, where they would, they would be responsible party if that were to happen. So, CMAR is what we believe is going to be the best value for us. Mackey talked about job order contract. Later, with the Highland Lakes project, we'll get into that, but CMAR, job order contracts, and then our TIPS and buy board, which are vetted vendors that we've already vetted through the process, and that helps with, instead of us having to go out for bids that are timely, we can already use TIPS or buy board for some of the delivery methods. So those would be the three major ones that are in Attachment A. And administration recommends that the board approve the proposed construction delivery methods for these projects as presented in Attachment A. Some of these may change, but what you're approving is just construction manager at risk, job order contract, and TIPS, and buy board.
Questions, comments? Anybody wanna make a motion on that?
I'll move that the board approve the proposed construction delivery methods for all bond projects as presented in Attachment A.
Motion by Mr. Verdel. Second by Ms. Tubig. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Construction testing for any 2025 bond construction project.
This is for the board to consider and possible action to delegate authority to the superintendent or his designated rank, select, and execute agreement with one or more geotechnical engineer, engineers for construction materials, testing services, land surveyors is necessary for the 2025 bond construction projects pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 2254, based on their demonstrated competence and qualifications. Administration recommends the board approves the delegation of authority to the superintendent for limited authority to contract for construction-related testing. And this would be for the new CTE wing, for the multipurpose center, and for new baseball field, all of those that will require some geotechnical engineers to come in and survey the land.
Administrative recommendation, anybody have questions, comments, motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the administration's recommendations as presented in the board packet here.
Motion by Mr. Verdel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Potential purchase of Highland Lakes Elementary queuing lane and additional parking, Mr. Whittle.
All right, so this is the first official project for the 2025 bond, and this is much needed and will be much appreciated at Highland Lakes Elementary School for a queuing lane drive. You can see the diagram image on the, as presented on the screen, this would be a two-lane queuing lane that goes all the way around and pretty far down, it's the end of the property line, and then will turn, there will be new parking areas there to the north of the pond, south of the pond, and then on the west side of the current parking lot, that's a total of 56 additional parking spots that will be added to Highland Lakes Elementary for the different activities that they have going on that will be much needed. And then the main purpose of this is to get the traffic flowing and off of Highway 1431 and away from some of those local businesses that get congested during drop-off and pickup at Highland Lakes Elementary School. If this project were approved tonight, it could get started as soon as possible, they're just waiting on one, approval from LCR, Mackey, have you heard that? We still are waiting on approval from LCR, but other than that, workers are ready to and eager to get started on this project. The hope would be that we could get started soon and would be ready to go by day one of the '25, '26 school year. We budgeted, we allocated 680,000 for this project with the Community Advisory Council, and our bid came in at this at 612,252, so about $67,000 under budget on this project. So we're excited, excited to announce that. We would like to select American Constructors as the general contractor for this project at Highland Lakes Drive. With that, I would entertain any questions you may have.
Questions, comments?
Those ponds are also gonna be new as well, right? Those retaining ponds, is that part of it?
The retaining ponds?
That's adding in those, right? Those aren't already there?
They're already, there's one already there, they may have to add, may have to add one, small one, expand it. But yeah, it's pretty much ready to go. There's some tree work that'll be needed to clean up around, and then will help tremendously with the flow of traffic and.
It's exciting to get the first project going.
This'll be the first one, absolutely.
Highland Lakes Administration, are y'all good with this? Happy? Were you about to say something, Mr. Bocheers?
Yeah, just a quick comment, so you know, y'all are setting a precedent coming in under budget on the first project.
Understood. Yes, sir.
All right, motion on this one?
I'd make a motion to approve, just lost the language there, is, American Constructors to make improvements to Highland Lakes Elementary School driveway in the amount of 612,252.
Motion by Mr. Bocheers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Payson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we are on item Q, almost out of letters here. MFHS Choir out of state travel requests.
And I've heard you've never had a Q at a board meeting, so.
I don't think we've ever had a Q.
Leave it to me. All right, the Marble Falls High School Choir Department hopes to travel to Branson, Missouri next spring break, March 15th through the 19th, 2026. They are requesting that 15 adults and 35 students attend. Price per student ranges anywhere from about $1,300 to about $1,191, $1,200, depending on how many students are in the room. It will include their charter bus for transportation, four nights lodging, four breakfast, four additional meals, as well as a number of ticketed attractions like Dolly Parton Stampede, the Haygood's Titanic Museum, Runaway Mountain Coaster, Sites and Sounds Theater, Fritz Adventure Track for Go-Kart Games. And they will be performing hopefully at one or two of the attractions as well. And so, I bring this to you, it can be for, you can wait and vote on it next month, or you can vote on it tonight. That is, any questions?
Questions, comments? Anybody wanna get this one going down the road?
I could make a motion to approve requires out of state travel requests.
Motion by Mr. Bocheers.
Second.
Second by Mr. Verdel. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I have to say one quick thing. This is my last board meeting, and there's been something I wanted to teach you guys for eight years.
Can't wait.
I know, it's really quick. Just like Ms. Mandy brought up about how to say the pledge appropriately a few weeks ago, when you make a motion, if y'all didn't know this, my first year to teach, I taught Ag and I was an FFA advisor, and I took my kids, I trained the parliamentary procedure team, and they won state. And so, parliamentary procedure, when you make a motion, you say, "I move that." That's the proper way to make a motion. So the rest of your board meetings from now on out, you're gonna say, "I move that," and you are gonna remember Heather Metzger from here to come. See? Just wanted to help you guys out, because it draws me crazy, but y'all are awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, y'all better get it right on this one, we got one left here. Consider possible approval of action consent agenda, we've got minutes from April 28th, 2025 regular meeting, and minutes from the May 14th, 2025 special call meeting. Anybody wanna make a motion? See what you've done?
I moved that. We were in consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Bocheers.
Second.
Second by Ms. McCary. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we've got upcoming meetings, board training opportunities, Monday, June 2nd is a special meeting at 6:00 p.m. SLI is June 11th through the June 14th, you've got a little check sheet on your dais to get some information back to Julie about that. Monday, June 16th is a special called meeting at 5:00, and then Monday, June 16th is a regular meeting at 6:00. At 5:00 o'clock's the debrief from SLI, and then the 6:00 is the regular meeting. Anything to add to that?
Nothing.
Okay. We are going to go back into executive session under discussion, board reorg at Texas Government Code 551.074 at 8:54 p.m.
Okay, we are back at nine thirty one P M. We've got discussion possible approval of action arising from executive session. We have an election of board of trustees officers for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. Open it for any motion on that. I'd actually like to propose a motion on this one for President, a slate of officers to be elected President, Mr. Payson, Vice President, Ms. McCary, and Secretary, Ms. Tubig. Be my motion. Sir, second for that motion. Yeah. Second by Ms. Tubig. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Congratulations, y'all. That gives us, gets us out of business and we will stand adjourned at nine thirty two P M.